All right, well, welcome. We're very excited about this project. It fills a key gap in our sidewalk network connecting homes along Crescent Street with a dense housing development to municipal services like the Hale Middle School and Town Center Park, just to name a few. So these projects, this is actually the combination of two projects that are on the Complete Streets prioritization plan. These ranked seven and 21 on that plan. And we're also pleased to announce that the town has been awarded construction funding for this project. So we'll have until the end of December 2025 to construct. So tonight, our goal is simply to hear from all of you, residents and board members alike, just to get feedback on these plans so that we can take that back to our engineers and continue finalizing the plans. So I thought that to start, we might have members of the planning board and any members of the Complete Streets Committee introduce themselves.
I can certainly start. Lori Clark, current chair of the planning board. I'll hand it over to Karen.
Karen Kelleher, planning board member and Complete Streets committee chair.
John?
John Clonar-Mono, planning board member.
Nancy?
Nancy Arsenal, planning board member.
Meg?
Meg Costello, planning board member.
And Valerie, I'm going to hand it back to you to call out. Facilitate Complete Streets.
Sure. So if you all don't know me, my name's Valerie Ortiz. I'm the planning director. And then we also have Michael here. If you want to introduce yourself.
Hi, Michael Sliegel, land use planner and GIS administrator.
All right, so the Complete Streets Committee is tasked with advising multiple departments and complete streets principles, which we'll review in a moment, to develop and amend the Complete Streets prioritization plan, to provide recommendations for compliance with the Complete Streets policy, and to guide Stowe in developing and implementing traffic safety policies and interventions. So I'll pass it off to Michael. Talk a little bit more about Complete Streets.
Yeah, so before we get into what we're proposing to do, it's just a good reminder to learn about what complete streets are. There's a number of principles that make up complete streets, and they're really based into providing a safe, comfortable, and accessible road network for multiple users. That can be pedestrians, it can be cars, bicycles, it could be people who may be in a wheelchair, to those who can use other mobility devices to get around town. We try with complete street principles to be inclusive of all people. And to achieve this kind of inclusive street design, we do it kind of through the physical design of the street networks or how we do the operation of them. So I put this graphic on the right, and it kind of shows a complete street scenario that Mass DOT has come up with. There's elements in here that are part of complete streets, like bike lanes, does it need turn lanes for cars, wide sidewalks and crosswalks? Complete street projects don't need to have all of these elements, but they tend to have at least two or three of these elements to make up them. So Stowe is a community that is trying to implement some of these complete street principles. So far, the goals that Stowe has identified is really based on improving the safety of all people that is inclusive of different modes of transportation. We want to ensure that we can connect key destinations in towns. That could be municipal buildings, parks, schools, large subdivisions. But in doing so, we need to make sure that we have a balance in the cost effectiveness and maintenance needs of these bigger projects. And something that we've heard over and over again in other planning work is that we want to really embrace this rural character and environment that Stowe has and make sure that any complete streets improvements that we do pays tribute to the physical existing environment. So I'll pass it to Valerie. We can kind of explain some of the work that has been done so far.
Sure, so just to highlight two projects that have been funded from the Complete Streets funding program through the state is the improvements to Harvard Road at Great Road where we repainted the existing crosswalk, installed wheelchair ramps, and the flashing pedestrian warning sign over there. And then also at Old Bolton Road and Great Road, we realigned the intersection, added a bike slip lane, improved sightlines for vehicles, and also improved the sidewalk for pedestrians.
So here is a big picture of kind of the town center of Stowe. There's a few key destinations kind of listed on here. Up in the north, we have the Pilot Grove Apartments, Pilot Grove Farm. As we head south along Crescent Street, you'll hit Hillside Cemetery and end around Randall Library. There's some other buildings around that are notable, like the middle school, the elementary school and town building. There's also the church, community park, and police station. These are all kind of areas that are around Crescent Street that we consider to be some key destinations. On the next slide, you'll see kind of an area of where we're proposing the sidewalks to be. From this big picture view, you can see it starts at the south at Hartley Road, which is kind of the a road that leads to the middle school and the elementary school, and it travels north to Warren Road, where it'll terminate. Next slide. So we're going to just go over some of the plans that have been produced. For those, well, I guess all of us are on Zoom right now. If you want to kind of stop looking at the screen share for a moment to take a look at the full-size plans on your screen, you're more than welcome to. At the bottom, there's a link that you can type in on whatever web browser you're using to kind of follow along. Or if you're more comfortable just looking at the Zoom slides that we have here, you're more than welcome to follow along this way. So here's just the cover sheet. There's five pages within this plan set. The first two kind of go over existing condition, and then the last two, besides the cover page, talk about proposed conditions. Here is an engineer's diagram of the existing conditions from Hartley Road kind of heading north, northeast into towards Pilot Grove Farm. We're not going to really go too much into detail about existing conditions because a lot of people who are probably on this call live around the area. A lot of us are familiar with kind of Crescent Street as a pretty, it's a main road in town, and we'll kind of go into what's being proposed.
All right, so we'll walk through these next few slides. I don't expect you to be able to read the fine print here, so I'll try to call out what is what is most important. The, what you're seeing in yellow are the ADA compliant tactile pads. The green is a three-foot-wide landscaped buffer strip, which is proposed where feasible on the plan. And these plans were created to avoid a lot of the constraints along the road, such as the placement of utility poles, just to avoid impacts to those poles, impacts to the landscaping in front of these homes to the extent feasible, and also to the extent feasible tree protection. The plans also include updates to stormwater management, such as adjusting catch basins or decommissioning non-functional catch basins. So here, we're starting at Hartley Road, moving east down toward Warren Road. Here, we're showing five-foot-wide asphalt sidewalks. In this portion, they are five feet throughout the site. Here on the sheet, I mean, further on down the plans, we'll see a few different pinch points. And we're also including new driveway aprons and granite curbing throughout the projects. So again, here, you're seeing the transition from the sidewalk to this open curb cut at the former highway barn. We are not proposing at this time to close this off because the future use of that site is unclear. The plans also show that we're maintaining this this access for the Hillside Cemetery so that people wishing to visit the cemetery may park up here and that the cemetery department can use this to to put their trailers when they're maintaining that that space. The sidewalk continues closer to the road in front of Hillside. And then this plan also proposes a crosswalk to provide access to the pedestrian easement that goes toward Town Center Park. And there's also one of the first pinch points at this far side, which is down to three, three feet, three inches, just to avoid this utility pole over here. And then moving down toward West Acton Road, there's another pinch point in this area, again, to avoid that utility pole, so the the walkway will be four feet and an inch there. Looking at a little bit of stormwater management over here, this is kind of where where that as you're going into town center, you kind of pick up a little bit of speed as you're going around the bend. So there is a lot of of drainage that we've worked around in that in that area. Sorry. So around this property here, we also have a few trees that we're that we're planning to remove as well as tree protection around a 48-inch tree over here. So this hashed area is C U soil to make sure that tree, those trees' roots are protected. And then to finish out the project, we're simply tying into the existing sidewalk at Pilot Grove Apartments. So we'll stop here and just ask if there are any questions on these plans so far, and I'm happy to to go back through and and see if there's if folks want to take a look a little bit more in depth than any any part of that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you said there's going to be a crosswalk to provide access to the right of way. Is there going to be? I hate to see a sort of a crosswalk to nowhere, right? So is there going to be something there so that people know where that goes, and it's clear to them that? I mean, I'm not sure. I don't recall what the access is there and how obvious it is for people that it, how it could be used.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. It's really not that clear right now. So that's this crosswalk here is kind of a question mark of whether residents and the the board wish to to see this move forward. In the future, currently, the Conservation Commission is not intending to put a lot of signage in this area, though they may in the future. What this looks like right now is like a driveway that provides access to a few commercial properties over there. And it is a crosswalk to nowhere. So there is not a sidewalk in this portion, nor is there one proposed. However, we do have the ADA landing pads on the other side of the street. So we would be, it is a little bit awkward there. Once you, once you get across the street into that landing.
And I guess Valerie, can you remind us where, what property are we in front of there?
So this is the, I actually can't see that. I don't have my glasses on.
That's actually 53 Crescent Street, 53. So that's right next to the what's the company?
Right here is the the electric, QuinElectric.
QuinElectric, and then down the driveway is AMS.
Right, so I will say, having used this road to run, that I have used the QuinElectric driveway many times as in place of the sidewalk. So I guess, John, to answer your question, I realize it doesn't officially go anywhere, but I can tell you I, because I want to, I want to head stay on Crescent versus West Acton, I do run down that driveway a lot. So meaning there is something on that side that you can actually be off the road.
Right, but my point is more that how many people know that? And if if people don't know that, and it just looks like a a crosswalk to nowhere, then it's not going to be, you know, what's the point? No, so yeah, maybe some people know that you can actually go down here, but.
Well, I don't, I would say, just as a, and I'm not speaking as a planning board member, I'm just speaking as a resident who uses the area, which is, it's not really, you don't really need to know. It's more just like a natural. I mean, that 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 whole property is one big what do you call it, egress? It's not. Right, so it's 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 just where people naturally tend to go. Let's put it that way.
But do you think that people would hesitate to go down there because they feel like it's private property?
It, I can tell you, it's not, you're not actually going down anywhere. Like, it literally is right next to the street, and it just seems like you're on the side of the road.
But if you were to go down. If you wanted to go to the Town Center Park, you wouldn't have to go down.
Oh, yeah, I got you. No, I never, I don't go down there. I'm more talking about continuing down the road.
Okay, so. Into John's point, if we're, if we don't have a wayfinding sign or anything.
That's fine.
Dependable on whether or not it makes sense to have a crosswalk.
Exactly.
But to Laurie's point, if people do walk along QuinElectric, it might make sense.
Well, and I guess I can tell you, you know, as if I come down Packard, run up 117, and then head down Crescent Street, there is, you know, there's sidewalk existing, this would extend. And obviously, wherever the sidewalk ends, I cross the street today. So let's not, I guess my input is, just because there isn't a crosswalk there, doesn't mean that people aren't crossing. They totally are.
Yeah, so I I live at that house. I live on 53 Crescent, right next to QuinElectric, so it's my driveway. I don't own it, we use it. So we're on that driveway with AMS, and I could tell you that many people walk down that road to go to the park, and many people cross over there, and it's very unsafe for that, the crosswalk. I mean, I see people with little kids, I see people walking their animal, you know, their kids in a stroller or walking. You know, this side of the road doesn't have a crosswalk, but like that, I don't know what the woman's name is, I think, but she was saying that she does cross over there to stay on Crescent. I would like to, I don't know if this is the time to say it, but I would also like to say that somebody said around that bend, the traffic gets a little, people speed up a little bit. And I just would like to say that it is really dangerous. That, sorry if you can't see me, that cross, that 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 curve there, it speeds up, like people gun it. I don't think they even know that there's a stop sign coming up at Hartley Road, but they are gunning it around that corner. I'm just going to throw this out there, like, it would be a perfect place for like one of those traffic, a speed limit, or a speed bump, or more signage. We put more signage there, but I don't know that it's, you know, I know that it hasn't helped. But I think a crosswalk might be helpful as well because the the children who walk from Pilot Grove Apartments to the school, it's unsafe. I mean, it's unsafe. So that's something I wanted to add.
That's good to know that there's a lot of pedestrian traffic.
Yeah.
So not to seem slow here, but why would we not put a sign saying that this goes to the Town Center Park? Like, why would we not? Like, it doesn't, it doesn't seem obvious, and if we don't want to have a crosswalk seeming like it's not going anywhere, why don't we just put a sign up there?
Yeah, I can check with with Conservation about their timeline for that.
I do have something to say. I think part of the reason why is people walk there, there's no parking in that direction. AMS, there's no, there's no parking space within that road, and there's a rock in the mid, like, right before, so you could get into the park, walking into the park, but you can't drive in. So people always come from, you know, the other side, and they park there. So it's really, it is people that, so I would just say the signage should have to say something that there's no parking, but there's an entrance in. I don't know how that verbiage would be, but there's not a parking place there, but there is an entrance to the park.
I had two questions if nobody else does. One is the minimum width. Were you getting ready to say something, Valerie?
Go ahead. There's just, there is someone with a hand up, but go ahead.
Oh, okay, he can go. That's okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Yeah, I lived, I'm the first speaker, I just spoke, that's my wife, I'm David. We live at 53 Crescent, and I agree, a sign would be helpful. Perhaps a maybe pedestrian traffic only sign, or pedestrian right-of-way access, or something to that effect. Because that's from what I understand when they built the park, that that was a right-of-way for pedestrian traffic only to the park from Crescent Street. And I can just reiterate, because I'm home all the time, that that, you know, crosswalk would be very helpful. You know, the traffic that comes around that bend, comes around that corner, it really in both directions is treacherous. And that's it.
Thank you. All right, Meg?
Yeah, sorry about that, David. What is the minimum width with, what is the minimum width for a sidewalk for ADA compliance? Is it a 3.3?
A minimum is is three feet. Mast dot appreciates a five-foot-wide sidewalk.
Okay, all right. So but we're okay with the three foot on those pinch points?
Yes, the the smallest or the narrowest width there is is three feet, three inches. So so it is, there are some tight spots, but we are, we are okay.
Okay, my other question has to do with stormwater. I I mean, I see that we have stormwater catch basins, but how is that going to be? Is this part of our grant? And is this going to be? What kind of a catch basin is it? Is it going to be under the street? Is it going to be one of those big detention basins where, I mean, how are we going to do this?
Yeah, so it is funded through the project. We've had the Highway Department and Bruce Fletcher take a look at the plans as well. In part, just to make sure that we're understanding of, you know, where these existing catch basins actually provide flow to, right, or where the pipes provide a flow to. So it's, that's how we discovered that one of the, one of the basins can be removed. But the others, it's it's not an intense system. It's really, it's really just to make sure there's not puddling on the other side of the of the road, between the road and the granite curbing.
So we'll just hook up with the existing catch basin water retention stuff.
Exactly.
Existing already. Okay, now is that under the ground, or is, does that running, do we know where it is?
Yes, I don't know. I don't know, but Highway knows.
But what my point is, is if under, it's not under the street, correct? We won't have to, will we have to dig up the street?
Oh, yes, there will be some impacts on the road, yes. Okay, so some of them are really much closer to to the edge of pavement currently around, I think it's the next slide. There are some, there is a catch basin right in the middle of or in, within the pavement, so there will be some some digging up. Yeah, there is this catch basin right here. You can kind of see this white square.
So Valerie, is that a new, remind me, is that a new catch basin or an existing catch basin that will be?
This one, it's existing, that's going to be removed and.
Yeah, I have a comment if you can hear me.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I was going back to the location of the crosswalk. I live just down the road at 73 Good Crescent Street, but I always walk past that before I dare cross because of the speed of the traffic coming from Acton. Presumably, there'd be some signs or, you know, warning for the traffic so they don't get surprised by the crosswalk.
I think that's a great comment, and it's, it is one that we've that we've heard. You're right. So currently, the plan does not call for for signage for pedestrian crossing there. Though it does seem like, given the speeds, that's something that we should look into.
Yeah, I would think so. Literally, I I go past that driveway before I cross, just habit for safety. Because they do zip around there. That's it.
Yeah, we talked about that at one of the sidewalks too, Valerie, and it does make sense to have some signage, warning signage for the crosswalk.
Lee, you've had your hand up.
What's the rationale for having granite curbing throughout the project when asphalt curbing was used in the Lower Village Business District?
That's a great question. So that, the granite curbing can be substituted for for Cape Cod berm, the asphalt berm. So it's, it's really up to up to the boards and, you know, resident feedback for for if we'd like to include it in the project. I believe we did not include it with Lower Village in order to to make it appear more more rural.
Oh, I thought it was because it was to save money. Granite's a lot more expensive.
Yeah, I'm sure that.
Yeah, that backed it in too, but a lot of it had to do with rural. And when we talked about it here, we did talk about there are a couple of spots that are real close to the road, so it's safer to have the the and because, and we didn't want to do like this section berm, this section granite, but the jury is still out on what we'll end up with.
But it's also has greater longevity, correct? I mean, does the plows eat up the asphalt?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know.
That's a good reason there.
And previous highway departments actually have not liked the granite because they just because of hitting it with their machines. So curious to know what the current highway department thinks.
I just want to say, I feel like on that note, you know, they do an amazing job plowing, but you know, they, we have cobblestone walls that they hit also sometimes. So maybe that that's just, I don't know that we shouldn't have a better material because they're afraid they might hit it. That should just be, you know, I mean, the asphalt, if you look further down near Hartley Street, the street, the sidewalk, at one point that was there, you could just see everything crumble, and I think it was an asphalt there that was just totally disintegrated all over the place. I don't know what the number house is. But I think that, you know, having the granite is, you know, like somebody just said, it's it's much more durable.
Yeah, but when it's hit with a plow, it may just crack and be a big detriment. That's very unforgiving in that respect, too.
I think there's some of the 508 number, I was trying to make a comment.
Hello, my live?
Yes.
Yep.
I am live. Yes, my name's Ed Basay, which I live at 58 Crescent Street. An observation, and I don't know what percentage, but I would say that maybe over half of the pedestrians that I see walking along Crescent Street walk along the southern side, that is the outside of the radius, rather than on the sidewalk. I hope that all of you will take a walk down there and see how you feel walking along the inside of that radius with the traffic zooming up behind you. Previous callers have mentioned the danger of this curve, and I don't think that widening this out a little bit is going to solve that entirely. Additionally, there was talk about maintaining the rural character. Uh, additionally, uh, there was talk about maintaining the rural character. Uh, of this. And I have to say that I'm greatly disappointed when I see on the plan here mention of concrete blocks. For retaining wall. I, if you uh, go along the entire length of Crescent Street, you'll see that all other retaining walls are. Field stone, which is more in keeping with the. Uh, we'll say the architectural. Character and age of the uh, uh, street. So I don't know. Uh, if. This will ultimately resolve the safety issue. And I don't think that it will. I was uh, hoping. That maybe you would reconsider at least along this radius. On uh, uh, putting this sidewalk uh, on the outside of the radius. Uh, on the southern side of Crescent Street and putting your crosswalks uh, away from. Uh, the dangerous uh, curve and blind corner. Uh, I think that's uh. What I have to say for right now.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Valerie?
Yes.
Are there any easements that have to be considered to place this sidewalk?
Um, yes, um, I believe the last speaker is um, is uh, the owner of the property that we would need either right of entry or a temporary easement. Uh, for, as he mentioned, the um, replacement of a, a stone wall in front of his home.
Um, can I just ask, are you the person with the pollinator garden? So I know what property you're talking about?
Oh, what type of garden? I'm sorry.
The, the person who has a pollinator garden out in front of their house?
No. No, I have no garden in front of my house. No, I have.
Okay, are you on the side of Quinn or are you on the other side?
The other side.
Yeah, just two, two houses to the, to the east of the hillside cemetery.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Valerie?
And I think uh, I, I. Somehow I just feel that uh. You're trying to uh, put the sidewalk uh, into the side of the hillside. And if construction costs uh, are any uh. Concern, it would seem as though. You'd be a better on some level ground.
Valerie?
Yes.
So based on those comments, can you just point out where the concrete blocks? On this plan are?
Yes, and we don't have a detail on those blocks yet.
Okay.
But that, that would be um, this, this wall um, that my cursor is on now. So, so currently it is. Kind of jutting a little bit into the public right of way. So the intent would be to move it a little bit north, um, so that we have room for the sidewalk there.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the aesthetics of the block too. I'm just reminded that.
Me too.
That, all I can think of is.
I know.
Village thing that we all hate.
Yeah.
The concrete wall there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um. So.
Yeah. And I'm over at that fifty three and so Ed lives across the street from me. So. He now. Has ivy covering what they'd already done to him years ago. And then we have the cemetery over here, which has the cobblestone and then my house and people across the street and then the big house. On the other side. So, and the people next door. And the people down over uh, towards the library. You know, if Ed had that there, it would. It would be a sore, it would, it would look crappy. It would just not look great. Sorry.
So what's to keep us from saying that we want um, field stones? I mean, it would be pricing right. I know somebody who has a huge pile of stones. On their property and they have given me free stones and. You know, we could, we can find somebody to donate the stones if instead of buying block.
It's definitely something that we will take back to the engineer and see if they can um, recommend. A different product or show us what they um, had in mind for that area. Um, but that's, that's absolutely a concern. Yes.
I, I've got enough rock in my backyard. You can have a quarry there if you want.
As long as they do the work.
Did the engineer give um, reasoning for the uh, the selection point for the crosswalk? I'm curious. I don't, I don't have any opinion. I, I more just was wondering. Um, what they were thinking.
Yep, I think that they were um, looking at the proximity to that um, the pathway toward the town center park. Um, and they were. Um, they looked at both either side of that. Um. Of that opening. Um, I think that they. They were intending to select a place where there could be the most, the most sightline for the cars coming around that curve. Um. Though of course, you know, the speeds are still concerning at that point.
Thank you.
So just a question, when you show what on this drawing, it's hard to see. When you, where you show the crosswalk.
Mm-hmm.
Just below the bottom of that ladder, the bottom of the ladder there. Just to the left of that are two parallel lines. That's the access route to the park, right?
Correct, it's correct, yes.
So that seems really pretty decent placement.
It's a decent placement to get to the park. But what Ed was saying is it is not a decent placement for speed. So there's two different issues.
Right.
And I'd love to know like, how do they, how do they um. Rationalize or just, and you know, how do they say what a speed limit should be? I mean. I have a small child. The next door neighbor has a small child. The people up in Pilot Grove have small children who walk to the school. Like, what constitutes, you know, it's a small area, you know, before Pilot Grove. That area there. Knock yourself out, go, go fast. But then when they get to Pilot Grove to. The. I don't even know, Ed, do you know what the, the actual speed limit is? Is it thirty five?
Posted at thirty.
Thirty, thirty. So it's thirty. They go fifty. They go fifty. I think the only thing. Really at that point is we should have a speed bump. There should be a speed bump to stop people from doing that because. They literally, they like are opening it up there and it's just uh. It's just so unsafe.
Speed limit, at least reduce the speed limit. From uh, Hartley Road or Pil- Pil- Pilot Grove to uh, Hartley Road. I mean, until uh, heading into town towards the school. Maybe that's got section of Crescent Road, reduce it down to twenty five as well. I think. Combination of things, you know, signage, reduce the speed a little bit, you know, uh.
Could they call it? For school, can, I mean, how far does it have to be from a school? To say it's a school zone? Because it can't be more than, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm imagining the distance from Pilot Grove to Hartley Road. Which is the, 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 the route, the bus route. For both center and, and, and hail. I mean, I don't think that we are far enough though. I mean, I think that we're close enough. From Pilot Grove to there to even call it a school zone.
Yes, yeah, we had looked at um, including school zone signage in this project. Um, signage is not eligible for complete streets funding, though it's something that the town could. Um, to look to purchase through another venue um, or through town meeting.
Okay.
I just throw something out. If money wasn't an issue. I feel like the existing little grass island that is at the intersection of West Acton and Crescent. Is, isn't that a little grass island? That's also. Almost one of those like refuge islands. And if we had. A crosswalk there to the little island and a crosswalk to the southern side and then. A sidewalk that went in front of two properties to the entrance to the park. I just feel like that would be ideal. But. Because that's visible. That's so visible, no matter which direction you're traveling, you would see that crosswalk. Need to give them a place to wait in the middle. But that's a bigger project. But I'm just saying, that seems a logical place.
I have to agree that uh. Uh. The crosswalk. Uh. With the traffic there, you're gonna have squashed people if, I think uh. There isn't enough sight, uh, uh, distance, sight distance to make that safe, no matter how, unless you can. Slow the traffic down. And I think that would have to be a mechanical means. I don't think any. S- signs uh, are going to slow people down. They're on their way to work. They've got the uh, yellow stripe going down the road and uh, they got their mind on something else. Uh, I, I think that uh. Uh, I would hope that at, at this stage, you can consider a, a piece of sidewalk uh, around that radius on the. South side and put your uh, pedestrian crossings. Uh, maybe one further down by the uh, unused uh, town barn and another one at the uh, triangle. That would get your people at least some sort of uh, sight distance. Uh. As I say, a lot of people don't walk on the existing sidewalk on the inside of the radius because they're terrified. And I hope that uh, you'll all take a walk down that uh, street. Down Crescent Street on the existing sidewalk and tell me how you feel with that traffic going by you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, uh, uh, question for the residents. Where do you see the pedestrians crossing to get to the town center park? Is it in that area where the crosswalk is or?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. It is.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that's a good thing.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah. You want, you want to make it as safe as we can.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, I see a lot of people walking on the other side of the street rather than on the, on the sidewalk. But a lot of dog walkers, uh, uh, people pushing baby carriages. Uh, that sort of thing. It, it, you know, they don't feel safe walking on the sidewalk.
Right.
And I don't think uh, my own feeling is that in a couple more uh, uh, feet width is not gonna change that.
Um, Lee?
What is the speed limit and? Is there any, I know that the town has the signs posted that it's. Twenty-five miles per hour unless otherwise posted. And yet we don't seem to take advantage of that. So. What is the speed limit there and can that twenty-five miles be implemented?
So it is a, there is a posted speed for this road already. Um, and I believe it's, it's thirty in this location.
Correct.
Is there a reason that we don't implement the twenty-five? We have those signs at the entrances of the town, but I don't see that really being enforced anywhere.
Yeah, so it's twenty-five unless it's posted otherwise. So really that's intended for roads that, that do not have a posted speed limit.
So why not just lower it?
You know, as frustrating as it is, it's not easy to change the, the speed limit. Um, because you have to go through the state and they base it on, correct me if I'm wrong Valerie, they base it on the average speeds.
How fast people are going.
Yeah, and in some instances, it could, they could say hike it up instead of down.
Yeah.
It's a very frustrating. Process.
I guess. And the other question I'd want to ask is, I know I have a friend who lives on Wheeler Road. And that's another street that gets some pretty heavy duty cut through traffic that people are speeding. And there's. Often a police officer on that road in the morning. Uh. But right in front of their house, there's a. You know, a speed limit sign, the um, the digital showing what the speed limit is of people coming. And she said that has made such a difference. I mean, I'm sure the police officer also doesn't hurt, but. Uh. But that has made such a difference because. You know, people see that and they go, you know, I'm gonna get a ticket. So. I wonder if that's, I mean, if we can't change the speed limit. Show people, you're, you're, I mean, and we're not talking people going thirty mi- even thirty miles an hour, I feel like that would be fine. But they're not going thirty miles an hour. They're going forty or forty-five.
Yeah.
People are, are zooming through there.
I've made that note. Yeah, we'll um, we'll take a look at, at what might be available to supplement.
Hi.
Um, Jesse?
A familiar name?
Hey folks, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right there. Yeah. Um, hi, everybody. Yeah, it's been uh, fifty-three weeks, so I thought I would. Who's Tompin? This guy, this project was an exciting one to be able to. Talk about. Um, so I just want, I had a few comments on the plans after looking through and I just thought I would. Um, roll through them. So yeah, Jesse Stedman, um, it's my name. I am not a store resident. I'm a. Still a business owner on thirty-six Tuttle Lane. I travel the stretch um, several times a week back and forth. Um, and overall, it's so great to see this plan um, on paper now. This concept. Should. So.
We're losing. We're losing your audio.
Breaking up a bit. Such an obvious gap in our sidewalk. Let me see here. Any better?
Yeah.
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 Okay. You know what? I'm, I'll turn off the video. Sometimes that helps. Um, okay, so um, if you can still hear me, just a few comments. I'm not sure what the RFP, the request for proposals was like in terms of Hartley Road intersection. But it would be great if this project could somehow.
Yeah, cutting out again.
Fire or yes, let me move. Okay, I'm gonna try it one more time and if it doesn't work, I'll let you go.
We heard a Hartley Road intersection.
Yeah, that Hartley Road intersection there. I'm not sure what the RFP said, but it'd be great to see some sort of landing pad there. Near the Crescent Street Fire Station for the kids that are. Getting out of school and then heading up Crescent Street towards Great Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Um, so yeah, like I said, not sure. Tailed. Um, and then further down the line there, I think it's. Helpful to have, it sounds like highway's already been included, but for highway and cemetery to really go out and look at the hillside cemetery entrances. Make sure they can do all the turning radiuses, the turning, the turns that they need basically with the trucks. Um, as far as that crosswalk goes, I know everyone's kind of burnt out on rapid flashing beacons, but. For a mid-block crossing. Where people are moving quickly on Crescent Street. I would definitely recommend seeing some sort of flashing yellow light there for people crossing. I see them everywhere now. In other towns in like Central Mass where I now live and. Um, it just seems like the location where it would make sense. Um, and um, a little further down, there was some discussion about um, the block walls. I feel like there was some discussion back when we were talking about Brook. Um. Basically the bridge leading over to the orchard Brook Mill. Some of the names.
Box Mill.
I think box, oh my goodness.
Been a while.
Very roughly. Um, uh, there was some like stamped, uh, maybe some stamped product or some like, basically some. You know, kind of zhuzhed up block that they were using to, to show some like historical character there. So there are different products that can be used. It doesn't have to look like the block that we ended up with in Lower Village that I'm sure everyone's familiar with. Um. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was. The, we, there was some discussion about the granite curb versus the asphalt curb. Um. You know. If, if, you know, if, if I could go back, I think asphalt, I think the granite curb would really be the right move here, given the amount of. Pedestrians that use this spot. I know there was some concern about, oh, you know, the plows can hit it and it can. It can, you know, give the plows a good ding, but um, the asphalt curb definitely gets beat up. And there's no question, like a lot of the, like the rural communities out here where I live in Templeton. Hubbardston is redoing their main street right now. Princeton just made some improvements. I see granite curb everywhere, especially in the downtowns. It just seems to make sense where you're gonna see a lot of people. Um, in this area. I know right now it's a little quiet in the summer, but. You know, everybody, everybody on this call knows what it looks like come September when the school opens up, so. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to lend that there. I'm really excited that everybody is um. And everybody on this call has really given some really great points about this. So it's exciting to see that uh. This actually has legs and funding. Which is no small feat, so. Kudos, thanks.
Thank you, Jesse.
Yeah, I like the idea of speed feedback signs, so maybe we. Yeah, I like the idea of speed feedback signs, so maybe we can find, there's probably no funding in this project, but maybe we can find some alternative funding.
Right, yeah, yeah, we could definitely take a look at what we have in our Complete Streets budget and the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee's budget. Um, you know, we can take a look at that for sure. Meg, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna kind of react to what Karen said, I totally agree, um, like Jesse said, if we hear some squeaky wheels that are saying they're tired of flashing yellow, I say tough. Um, we're looking for safety and, you know, just get over it and go slower and, you know, you won't have to close your eyes or look the other way. Um, the other thing that I wanted to say was that, has anybody considered in those grassy areas, like just addressing the concerns that that gentleman, um, who was talking about how terrifying it is to walk along there and how he feels like it's unsafe? Has anybody thought about putting guardrails where the grassy, like that grassy area is right where the, the dip of the road is? So we could actually, in, instead of the, um, the grassy area, we could actually put up maybe a guardrail there, which would make the pedestrians on that sidewalk feel more comfortable.
I think the more concerning area is the place where there won't be a grassy area.
Yeah.
Towards the corner, uh, cause as, if you walk there, it is a scarier place.
Yeah.
Um, than where the grass is. Where the grass is, it feels like you have some room, um, I think after that, it feels like you're on top of the road.
Going towards Acton or going towards?
Going towards Acton, which is really why I, I'm saying from my earlier comment on running is the natural place to cross is like across from Quinn, because you don't wanna be on that side when you get to the corner if you're trying to cross.
Right, right.
I just have one other quick question. I, I, I just rode past there really slowly today and, and looked at things. Is, um, shoot, what was I gonna say? Um, but, but forget it, yeah, sorry.
All right, well, if there aren't any further comments right now, we'll just move forward.
I have a comment, hello, I have a comment. Uh, Amanda Bennett, twenty-eight Crescent Street, so I have a, a couple of questions. First of all, in front of our house and the DeLuca's next door, so that's twenty-eight and twenty-six, it's about, I don't know, twenty-four inches from the sidewalk to the road, and they talk about adding a six-inch piece of granite. I wanna know, are you gonna lower the sidewalk or raise the road to make those two meet? That's one question, uh, the other question was, the other question was, are you gonna remove the sidewalk that's currently there and, and remake it? Because like there are pieces of sidewalk between twenty-eight and I think they're, the Hatleveggs, the big blue house, that there is no sidewalk there, it's just pieces of granite, which, you know, when we snow blow, it gets up on our bank. So, so yeah, that's one question, and, uh, and as far as, um, safety goes, I mean, it, 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 people, i- in case you think up that end, people don't blow through the stop sign all the time, most people blow through the stop sign and the worst offenders are their moms driving up to Hale to pick up their kids, or the dads frankly. But yeah, so I mean, it's policing is always good, and sometimes I'll actually call the police to do it, but, all right, so those are my questions.
Mm-hmm, yes, um, so to try to answer a few of those, um, the existing portions of sidewalk are intended to be removed, they're not in good condition, um, and they are also quite narrow, so, so the intent is to, to remove all of that product and then replace it with a new, uh, five-foot wide sidewalk. Um, that's a great question about the, the six-inch granite curbing. I don't know how, how many of those inches are intended to be, um, uh, above ground, right? Cause you, you do, um, snug them into the, the, the road itself. Um, I can ask the engineers a little bit about how, how that's gonna interact with the, um, the curbing here, typically they, they start doing a, a bit of a, um, angled granite when it comes toward um, the, the curb cuts, but we can definitely get a detail, which, you said you're at twenty-eight Crescent?
Yes. I'm at, I'm at twenty-eight, um, three houses down from Hartley, two houses away from the town barn, um, and the, and the sidewalk is considerably higher than the road there. So a six-inch piece of granite isn't gonna really do much.
Right.
Yeah, that was my question, and, you know, um, and then, then, uh, there's a whole thing about, we have cobbles in our driveway that w- we paid to have put in the driveway to look nice and sharp, and it seems like they're gonna go away and you guys are gonna repave it for us, am I understanding that? Cause my husband's like, are they repaving it for us for free, the whole thing? So, um, just, you know.
Yeah, so, so your driveway is, is where my cursor is, I believe, is that correct? Is that?
I don't, I don't, I, I'm up in Maine right now and I don't have access to, to call it, to be video.
Sure, yeah, so how about we, um, I can follow up with you, um, if you want to, I can send you a, um, a letter or you can contact the planning department and we can, um, find time to kind of talk a little bit more directly about that file condition there.
Okay.
Uh, Valerie, are you aware of, and you might not know where she's talking about, but when she says her road is higher, we're talking, you know, that spot that she's talking about.
I, I do recall, yes, yeah, we've gone.
I, I walk there, I walk there and I actually feel like I'm going to fall off. And I'm, I'm not exaggerating there, like, it's, it's like three feet up or four feet. My son is seven and he rides his bicycle and I have to get off and like, get next to him because I'm afraid that he's actually gonna fall into the road. So that, hopefully somebody is talking about that, because I was gonna mention that, that that's gonna have to be really brought down like major construction for that, I believe. Because I don't, there's no way in the world you could bring the road up to meet that. So somebody should really look at that, uh. She's, she's not exaggerating, it is like major.
Yes, understood.
Size of a toddler.
Perhaps a guardrail or wooden guardrail or something more appealing along that raised area. So there's a barrier between sidewalk and, and the road.
Well, I've lived in that house so long, if I remember, the sidewalk had stairs and a railing on them. If anybody else goes back that far.
Oh, yes.
Smile at that too, yeah.
So yeah, so this is better, but, uh, yeah.
I g- I just had a question about the surface underneath the subsurface. Like, were those, were those sidewalks that are existing kind of put down at an older time when there wasn't a lot of care to, um, to kind of maintenance the, uh, the surface? And are we gonna have to do a lot of, of work with subsurface before we get, or is it pretty much solid and stable other than the area where, um, Debbie is talking about, Deborah is talking about? Um, like, do we have a lot of work to do under the surface?
I imagine so, yes, the, the, as the current, um, sidewalks, they look like they were just, just paved over. Um, it, it doesn't look like a lot of care was put into it, um, not to, to be too critical. It's, it's really just a different standard that we're constructing to now. Um, so I, yes, I think that there will be, um, considerable work to make sure that the grading, um, is right and that we have, um, good, solid, compacted subbase there.
Okay, good.
I, I have one file question, and everybody really that I've spoken to about this wants to know this. Amanda Bennett, twenty-eight Crescent Street, has any provision been made for any sort of thing to clean the sidewalks in the winter? I've had both my daughters walk to both schools and it was always treacherous as anything because they'd had to walk on one seventeen for part of it, and, you know, for years, we've been like, oh yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that at town meeting, and I brought it up and rah rah rah. Nothing has ever happened. Are we ever gonna get some kind of way to clean the sidewalks other than my husband and my neighbors, you know, cleaning in front of our house?
Yeah, so unfortunately, I do not know of any plan for that. I can absolutely forward that comment on to, um, to others, to the Highway Department, to the, the Complete Streets Committee. Um, I've, I've continued to hear that more and more these days, and so I think that it's, there should be some, some better response to that, to that concern.
Thank you.
All right, well, we're gonna keep moving on, we just have a few more slides left just about what our, our next steps are here. Um, but certainly feel free to reach out with any additional comments that may come to you. Um, if you are a property owner that, um, a- along Crescent Street, we do absolutely wanna hear from you, um, and continue to, to chat about, um, the impacts to your property or to your neighborhood. So, um, please feel free to reach out with, with any, any comments as we, as we move along with the projects.
All right, so as I kind of described earlier, there's a lot of different considerations for, um, complete streets projects, um, and as we are going through the design, um, we try to identify some of, uh, the ways that, uh, this project will incorporate them. Um, this project will mostly focus on the pedestrian aspect of the Complete Streets thing, uh, the principles of Complete Streets. Uh, and we're trying to design it so that it is ADA accessible to all users. Um, this will benefit everyone in Stowe who wants to use it. Um, so really designing to the standard is really valuable. Um, from the map that we showed kind of with the beginning, um, there is connections to some of these really important um, amenities in town, like the schools that kept getting mentioned, um, Randall Library, um, with its proposed renovation, um, and, uh, the municipal services like, uh, a town building. Uh, we talked with Mass Historic and they have let us know that the project itself will not have any, um, impact on, uh, the cemetery there. Um, thankfully, a lot of this will be funded or, a majority of this will be funded from Mass DOT. There's a few things that we talked about, um, and heard from, uh, the residents that might need to be funded from other sources. Um, but once we kind of compile all these things, we can really understand, um, additional funding that may be needed and avenues and grants to get that. Um, we're hoping that the sidewalk, because it is built to a higher design standard, it will be easier for the Highway Department to maintain. Um, if there's, you know, no pieces jutting up into, uh, or crumbling away, um, it makes it easier for, you know, if they're gonna do shoveling, um, or clearing up any brush along the side. Um, and this is a really critical link, um, for the continuation of Stowe's sidewalk network. Um, just further north, you'll see it'll connect, or future connections can lead to West Acton Road, South Acton Road and Boxborough Road. So kind of getting this piece in now, um, will allow for future extensions and hopefully improving the pedestrian experience, um, in this area. Right, so these are the next steps that we have. Um, so right now, we are kind of at this receiving feedback stage. Um, I've been taking notes, Valerie's been taking notes, um, and we have a, um, more opportunity for you to email us, to call us, to let us know any additional comments that you have. Um, tomorrow, this week, um, we'll be getting into the, um, kind of assessing the feedback that we've received, um, and preparing that for the engineers. They'll take that feedback and develop a one hundred percent design. Um, and then from there, we'll kind of get into the preparing for construction, we'll develop a bid package and see if any firms are interested in involving themselves in this project. Um, once that kind of gets underway, we'll develop a schedule and send it out to all of Butters. Hopefully everything goes well with that, so then we can start the construction of the sidewalk itself. Um, from the engineers, they estimated that it could take up to six months. Um, we're hoping it'll be less, um, but we'll see how that goes. Um, and then once the project is done, um, we can assess the impact and start planning for, um, other improvements, maybe to that area, continuations of the sidewalk, and really trying to bring this complete street vision to Stowe. Um, and now we just have any other questions, comments, if you have any, need any more info? Um, now's the time, I'm happy to answer any questions or receive any more comments. Um, and if there's not, um, you are.
Looks like David Reed is.
Yes, I'm a little confused from that last slide, is there a, is there another, uh, feedback or another, or at least bring back to the, to the, your Butters for a review after the engineering, the final design?
Yeah, we can, uh, absolutely send out another, um, another letter, um, that can provide you with a link to what, what the, um, where the, the final design plans are and have a little bit more time to, um, to get feedback. Um, I, yeah, I'll have to, it'd be helpful, actually, if, I don't think that I have your, you know, contact information. Right now, we only have the, the mailing addresses for folks, so please do feel free to use our email addresses so that we can better, uh, quickly get in contact with you and, and send you more usable material.
Okay, and how would I access that, our emails?
Um, so they are on the slide now, um, but there, we're also, um, within the planning department in, in Stowe. So feel free to, you can just navigate to the planning department's page and there should be our, um, our contact info.
I see it, great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right, so with that, we'll just, we'll wrap up, thank you all so much for attending and for providing us with such valuable, um, feedback. This has been really helpful, um, I'm very excited to, to move this project forward and hopefully we'll have more for you soon. Well, thank you.